Information items, the first item on the agenda for information items this evening is a presentation for South Junior High School that will be given by Principal Jason Harris.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share about South Junior High School and our learning community. I think this is a good thing that the school board is doing to help learn about each school. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share tonight. Find a group of people who inspire you, spend a lot of time with them, and it'll change your life. I think every day I show up at work and I'm inspired by students, staff, and families, and that drives everything that I do in our team. You see it here at the top with a couple of our leadership staff, Mr. Highcamp, Sandoval, our administrative team. You see a couple of our grade level teachers. You see some of our staff members that took part in an orchestra concert where they had to wear helmets. You see our students engaged in an all Tiger assembly to our non-licensed staff that are being appreciated for all they do to two staff members on Twin Day, Tiger Pride Week. Our mission drives us. Our core values, our strategic plan, this is the heart of what we do at South Junior High School. You see opening day with our team, and then you see our head custodial staff and head secretary being honored for all they do through resource training for our non-licensed staff members. Our commitment and community at South Junior High School, we believe all our energies and resources should be focused on student learning, and we need to do that through a collaborative culture with adults, community, students focused on results. You see it here at our education expo with one of our high school staff members and one of our junior high students that perform in gymnastics. You see it here with two of our teachers being honored for resource training as Teacher of the Year, both sixth grade language arts teachers, and we had a storm on our walk-a-thon and you see our staff members working together to put the inflatable back up. We believe through a collaborative culture, student learning can happen. We need to do that specifically focused in on achievement. The four areas that we feel that that can happen is building community, creating norms, ensuring learning, and creating a safe, healthy, responsive environment. You see it here with our walk-a-thon currently right now we have a thousand students, seventy licensed staff, and a total of a hundred and twenty licensed and non-licensed staff. We've become a global school. We get kids from all over the world in the classroom, all across the United States. We have students from, just the other day, I talked to students from California, and how did you make it to Minnesota? His family migrated here. You could sit in a classroom and you can have a student from Kenya. You could have a student from right here in St. Cloud, all in one classroom. We've become a global community. You see it here on what we believe to really be an inclusive environment for all stakeholders, our students, staff, and our families, and really get to understand them. Our students created a display that says "South welcomes you," and it called out multiple things that were all unique and different in our own ways, and you see it here as you walk into our school. We know staff-student relationships is the key to student achievement. At the beginning of the year, we create that time where staff and students get to just have fun together, where we build that bond. We have a walk-a-thon and it's called Tiger Pride Week, so we have dress-up days where students, staff, this one right here is Twin Day, so you got a staff member and a student building a relationship. You have here our school resource officer working with our students to really help students understand the relationship between school, home, the police, is not all a bad relationship. So getting our school resource officer to build relationships with our kids. You have our teacher cheering to help create signs for our students at a basketball game, and then you have myself just with the students having fun. We know, we believe that staff-student relationships are key to student achievement. We also believe students have to have student-to-student relationships to create a positive community. When I talked about that Tiger Pride Week, you see the Twin Days for multiple students. You see down here our Latino-Hispanic Heritage Leadership Group went to Augsburg a couple of weeks ago to really start to think about college, and we need to start to help students see that, plant the seed, help them find purpose, and also put them on the pathway to college and career readiness. We know a vital part of the relationship between home and school is critical in student achievement. We've tried really some non-traditional ways to create engagement with our families on top of the basic traditional ways of open house conferences. We start to look at different models to bring families in. You see here, we do a, every trimester we do a Student of the Month breakfast for students that have made academic achievement, social achievement, attendance, and that kind cooperative community that we look at. So those parents come in, they celebrate with their students for breakfast. We have up to 200 families that attend that once a trimester. You see here, those families that come, they take a picture with their student with the South Tiger frame. That's kind of a good way to have fun with our students and our families. One of the things that we did this year was a cultural night. With that diversity, we need to create understanding for our students, for our families and our parents, and have interracial dialogue around race. So we had a cultural night. In March, in April, we do a family night right before MCA's to really help families engage in how important the MCA test is, how do we have kids get healthy dinner, good night's rest, food, breakfast, and helping families understand how important the MCA's are, and then really engaging those families on resources that they need to do. We know school-community engagement is at the heart of our mission. I'll start in the middle where we connect with St. Cloud State in the BIGS program where we have our students, a selected group of students that have mentors at St. Cloud State. You see in the center picture, this was one of the appreciation awards for our students thanking their BIGS. We call them BIGS, it's the BIGS program. Here, we're teaching our students not only about academic learning but how they can be purposeful in the world. We did a book drive and we collected over a thousand books to send to Africa, and we worked with one of our St. Cloud State professors here. We have Mr. Moles down here at our ten-year anniversary for immersion. He wanted me to get him right smack in the face with a pie down here on the end. We know that community engagement being visible is key to student achievement. We have built multiple partnerships with all our local universities, our local businesses, and continuing to live out our mission. When we bring staff, students, and families together, you have to have some collaborative norms and working as a collective group. Our norms that we work through at our school and our pillars are kind cooperative community. So when we meet through parent meetings, through student meetings, through professional development meetings, these are the values that we go into these meetings for our staff to, and stakeholders to really work through. I talked about the collaborative approach. We believe in working together, staff, students, families, staff, student to student, in that collaborative effort around student achievement. You see here, student voice we believe is critical, where we have students do a professional development, really hearing student voice. These are, were five Muslim students that were a part of our community, excuse me, future problem solvers, and they shared on their, their problem was around racial equity and gender, and they did a presentation to our staff which was powerful. When we work with our staff on looking at data, we know small collaborative groups looking at achievement focused in on goals are important. We have a team model, six teams, for, most of the teams have the four core subject areas and two electives that they work together through data teams, looking at student data, looking at professional development, and really trying to make sure all kids have opportunities and are achieving at a high level. We know specifically in ensuring learning, our students kind of created this wall in the building. The road to college begins at South Junior High School, not only college but career readiness as well, and preparing our kids for 21st century education. We know through the core values of working together, communication, teamwork, are ensuring that students get opportunities to be successful. One of the things that we focus on are four critical questions. What do we want all students to know and be able to do? How are we assessing to make sure students are learning it? Once they, once they may not understand it, what things do we have in place? And if they already understand it, how are we achieving at a high level for those students? So when we look at what do we want all students to know and be able to do, that question is, we want all kids exposed to grade level content. We know kids need to be exposed to grade level content or how they're accessed for proficiency and growth. We do that through classroom assessments, we do that through MCA's, we do that through STAR assessment focused on achievement to make sure all kids are learning at high levels, and if they're not, what tiers do we have in place? When you look at the data specifically, we're still trying to solve a problem where we see a gap between our white students and our black students. When you look at the MCA proficiency, you see our white students at a high level above the state, almost at about seventy percent proficiency in reading and math. When you look at our black students, we're around forty percent, thirty percent, and we've been really working on different methods to make sure all kids first have the opportunity to be challenged and then find the solutions to that. One of the biggest things, and I know you guys know this, when we look at proficiency, we focus in on growth. Every year kids should be growing. If they come to us at a lower level, they should be growing at double the pace, and we've seen that when you look at the data, fifty-plus percent of our students grow at either average or above average rates in math and language arts. So, we're kind of focused in on that yearly growth to make sure all kids are understanding that, and really getting parents involved to have them understand how kids are assessed and they know what, what kids need or are able to do. So think about if you had a child at middle level, you want them to be exposed to multiple things, you want them to have exploration and multiple opportunities, you want them to be able to work in small groups, you want to, want them to be able to critically think and problem solve as we prepare them for the world. We do it in the form of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, so that STEAM approach where we look at to really give kids a viable opportunity to make learning come to life, where we make it relevant to them. So you see our science and our math students working in small groups on a bacteria lab. This youth culture, they're learning on hands-on. They want to make the connection between learning and real life, and we know with multiple opportunities and making it relevant, kids have that shot, and you see most of these groups are working in small groups. Those are some of the things that we look at when we're in the classroom. How do kids move away from traditional, you just share information, to really start to learn and think on their own and work with small groups? Those are the things that prepare kids for the world. We know the four Cs, collaboration, communication, creativity, to really help kids understand and make learning fun and relevant. Technology, one-to-one iPads, a thousand students have electronic devices. We use that to enhance learning. Now, compared to when we were coming up, kids have everything they need at their fingertips, and like I stated before, when we look at technology, we focus in on those, on those four Cs of really being creative, collaborating, and really using technology to enhance learning. Project Lead the Way, technology and engineering, you see it right here where our students are creating robotics through our green architecture, our engineering classes, they made a shed, really hands-on learning to give kids exposure and experience to things they might not be exposed to at middle level. We believe specifically, kids need to explore, they need to find strength, they need to find their purpose, and they need to find things that are going to engage them, and I think in, in our community, kids have multiple opportunities to get engaged in multiple Our arts programs start specifically within the classroom. You see a visual arts down here, and here was a mirror where we worked with Holdenford Middle School, and we did an art residency where we created some artwork that's at the local library, but that collaboration between us and Holdenford was a good for the kids to get exposed to difference and really focusing on learning with art. You see here, we have our honor band that worked with St. Cloud State, these two top photos, with one of the well-renowned composers. You have our students that took part in our, these are our musical students that took part in, I can't even think of it, Mr. Hinch, just tell me, we took part in our
[crosstalk 00:08:59]
Night of the Stars, there we go. Night of the Stars, where our kids got to showcase what they can do around acting and musicals, but it all starts within the classroom, within our language arts programs, and giving kids opportunities there to find their strengths and interests and purpose. And I kind of talked a little bit about the language programs. Here's our advanced language arts program for our kids that are at high levels, are top, they tested probably the top ninety-four percent of our student achievement. They were working on an actual project that they were trying to figure out inertia, and they were trying to do this thing for NASA. So you got kids really starting to think big now and really explore opportunities. You see our immersion celebration, we have a Chinese offer where kids get a chance to learn Chinese. So that exposure to multiple things and finding interest, we feel is at the heart of middle school. You have one of our students, one of our second, second language students, teaching a class on Somali language and really working with a small group of students. So really giving kids an opportunity, we know that works for learning and achievement. Our physical education, healthy lifestyle, we know that's very important. We really, in our health and physical education curriculum, have really tried to find different ways to expose kids to different things. We have students that were skiing, hadn't had, been exposed to skiing, but right within our confines of our school community could go out to the field and, and work on skiing. We have a rock climbing wall we just brought to life, so really giving kids opportunities around health and fitness and moving away from some of your traditional activities for students. And we know, no learning occurs unless we have a safe, healthy, responsive learning environment, and I think we use a good model with our PBIS model to really set the stage for kids socially, emotionally, to set high expectations on what we expect from all kids. And our school is a kind cooperative community, and we want to recognize kids when they hit those high levels. You see it here, we recognize students weekly who meet those expectations, they do a, they make a big deal out of the frame, we make a big deal out of it, they get a certificate, their parents can come in, celebrate breakfast, and really helping kids understand appropriateness. What's appropriate for school, what's not appropriate for school, and really helping them understand how to socially, emotionally learn, excuse me, at middle level. We see emotions all over, and I think we really try to be responsive to that to help all kids achieve. You see it right here, we do a, at least once, once a trimester, we do a Tiger Pride Assembly where we get all the kids together and we celebrate all the great things, and then if we have to talk about how we can learn and improve together, we could do it in that setting as well. The kids love this, it's a good way for them to see the students, the staff working together. We do fun games here, and then you see just families coming in for lunch with their kids to really just get a chance to fill our culture and our school community. Our advisory program starts at the beginning of the day for twenty-five minutes. This is where we really tailor in and work on social-emotional learning for kids. How do you really solve conflict? How do you problem solve? How do you compete with your neighboring advisory? You see right here, we did a South Winter Olympics, so we can make learning fun and then really talk about what's important around achievement, and we do it in multiple ways in small group. We created a book drive that was a thousand books started here with the advisory. We do a house cup that, once a month, kids could, can gain points through their advisory through activities. So making learning fun and also making it purposeful of how kids could give back to their school community, their local community, as well as their state community. You see it right here, we do a red-out with the American Heart Association. Our school's become the model in central Minnesota for middle schools to really talk about health and fitness, and you see a couple of our students here selling t-shirts to create a red-out as we help kids give back and learn about healthy fitness. So when kids already know it and they're achieving at high levels, we expose them to opportunities to really, in leadership ways. Our school was selected, one out of three schools within the state for our contributions on how we give to our school community, local community, and national community through We Act. They did a cultural literacy tour and they selected our school. You see it here, it was a great event for our students, our staff, and our parents to take part in. You see here, our AMO leadership group where we work with, collaboration with Tech High School, and helping kids build the bridge between middle school and high school, and they went down to the University of Minnesota. So starting to help kids really plant the seed about college and career readiness now to where you see, we're right now on a water campaign to make sure everybody has clean water. We're collecting water for families and schools in Africa, you see it right here. To kids really being voiceless and standing up for what they believe around, we are silent through a cause, this student was standing up for bullying. And that same day, which was ironic, it was the school walkout for Across the Nation, we had students that walked out on gun control. So you have students that were silent for a cause, so students outside saying, hey, we need something around gun control. It's teaching kids about who they are, giving them opportunities to, to learn and start to prepare our kids in middle school for, in middle school for life now and finding purpose, find it, being, making an impact. We talk about it all the time, and you see our young ladies doing that red-out for the American Heart Association. So when you have building community, creating norms, ensuring learning for all kids around 21st century skills in education, here are some of the results that you get. I'll start here, here's our robotics team that qualified for state. Our students that shared their student voice were ranked in the top three in the state for community future problem solvers. These were all Somali and females. We had five award winners for the Martin Luther King Award through St. Cloud State. We had the St. Cloud State Math Contest where students, middle school students from all over the state compete. These three young men finished in the top two percent out of eight hundred kids. And then here, you see two of these young ladies were our central Minnesota spelling bee champs, and then you see our slap shots, two of these students that are South students with the mare. We believe when you put those things together, you get these results around achievement, learning, and really helping kids understand and find their strength and purpose at, at a young age, and we're preparing them for the world now. We put together a video just to show our community. I'm not a great actor, so when I see some, some of these, sometimes I just shake my head, but you guys will get a chance to see in action South Junior High School. Welcome to South Junior High School, home of the Tigers, where we're a kind cooperative community. Our focus is to engage and empower all stakeholders as we prepare our students for our 21st century education.
I am very proud of our curriculum in science at South Junior High. We have all sorts of activities that not every kid gets the opportunity to do. If they come to South, they get to do dissections, they get to look through the microscopes, they get to use the calorie lab to figure out how much energy is in a piece of food.
Students are empowered in Project Lead the Way by being able to actually do things. They're able to think for themselves and make, make their own decisions and cut lumber and, and actually build, build a structure, build a wall, and carry that wall over and stand it up and position it and do all those wonderful things.
Our EO department works with these students that come to our school to really help engage them at the level that they are currently speaking English and also challenge them to work harder to reach the next level. We really work with the skills that they already have and they're coming into our classrooms with to bridge the gap between what they don't know in English and what they already know in their own language.
It helps them learn that they can move on and learn the language and develop into a professionalism and help the Minnesota community overall.
It's a thrill for me to watch the students be able to interact and learn from each other. Here at South, it is, it's just a great place for students to learn and work together collectively.
In the choir program here at South Junior High, students are empowered to find their voice in a leadership role, using their voices outside of the South Junior High walls in a positive way.
We want to get our kids passionate about the learning that's going on in this room, and I think we, we see that passion with the growth that we've seen in our students, especially on their STAR scores from spring of last year to spring of this year. Our students are showing tremendous Our students are showing tremendous growth in the areas of math, and I think it's because they're excited about what they're learning.
So Avid allows students to experience a lot of college life. They learn how to take great notes preparing them for college. They learn how to organize themselves, to prepare themselves, not just for classes here at South, but for when they go to the high school. And then we look into the future so that they can actually see their dreams come true when they go to college.
So students are able to kind of work at their level, and then they also get to have an opportunity to listen to some of those other students that are talking and challenging each other and learning about each other's life experiences, which completely adds to the engagement of what we have going on in here.
I think the engagement that comes with language learning comes with finding connections between things that are part of your everyday life, things that you already know and love, whether that's sports or entertainment or just talking with your friends, and literally translating that into another language. But at the same time, also giving you a window into things that you don't know as much about.
Here at South, the Spanish Muslim program opens a lot of doors for us and gives us opportunities that we wouldn't have before.
We allow to involve and engage the students. For example, one of the main thing that we focus on is catching those good behavior and giving incentives for the kids to display some great behavior.
We Act is a program that challenges kids to commit to making a difference in a local campaign and in a global campaign.
I feel empowered to help others that even here in St. Cloud, Minnesota, I can help others way out across the globe.
South Proud!
South Proud!
For Gujio Sodisah!
South Proud!
South Proud!
South Proud!
South Proud!
South Proud!
Questions.
Bruce.
Thank you, Jason. Jason, what I wrote down here and what I heard frequently, and which I'm appreciative of, and I think it's the great message, is that you were, nearly everything came back to student achievement. When you were talking about relationships, staff and students, and students and students, and home and school, and school and community, those kinds of relationships, all coming back, you brought it back to student achievement. When you were talking about collaboration and how collaborative efforts happen throughout the school, you brought that back to student achievement. Your safe, healthy, responsive learning environments, you connected that back to student achievement. And your proficiency focus on yearly growth, and you brought that back as a, as a step towards student achievement. I think any time that, that we hear student achievement at the center of any narrative, at the center of any conversation about schools, when we hear student achievement being said over and over again, that's, to this board member, very reassuring and very appreciative. And I just wanted to note that, that that's a, that those are two great words to, that we all should be using in every conversation we have, student achievement. Thank you.
Thanks. Jerry.
My three sons went to South, the first, when South became a middle school. When you leave elementary school and you're looking at going to junior high or middle school, it's a place where parents step back and ask, "Can I really put my kid there?" And when my kids were making that choice, a lot of their friends were worried that South, although it was a wonderful place and great teachers and lots of tremendous opportunities, there were people that were making the jump to a private school because they were worried that there wasn't a challenge for all kids. And now, my kids are long gone, but there's a generation of friends that I know who are going through that same concern. And some of them are partners of mine and some of them are friends of mine. And what I'm hearing from them, two things. First of all, wow, I am so glad that I picked South. My kid has taken really challenging courses. There's a wonderful environment there for them. And had I put some money down to a private school, I couldn't have expected any more. And then the second thing is, boy, I wish people knew that, okay? That sometimes they get into argument with their friends, "Why did you send your kid to South? I mean, really, I'm over here and I'm paying good money and I must be getting something better." And so I think, I don't know what the answer to that is, but if we could just bottle that somehow. Every, every group of parents, whether their kids are struggling to learn English or, or they're behind and they want to catch up, they all, they all kind of want the same thing. They want their kid to have a great challenge. And what I'm hearing generally, and it's just anecdotal, because, you know, on the school board, you just really, you get, you hear from some people and you don't hear from everybody, everybody, but what I'm hearing from people is these ringing endorsements, you know? "Thank you so much for what South is doing for my kids." And the more that people could realize that we've got a great writing program over there that is, that is challenging, second to none, that kids are taking difficult math and getting even more math opportunities than, than you could imagine. And plus, this collaborative environment, you know, thank you for what you're doing, and I just wish that we, we could keep spreading the word.
Thank you. I think, Jerry, I think you hit it. I think it happens in the day-to-day conversation when schools come up of how you might hear a perspective of, of our school. And we need to give a positive image always because of those experiences. I have the conversations daily. I challenge folks to come to South Junior High School, come visit, see what's taking place within the classrooms and the community. I think through multiple avenues of communication, how do we continuously build partners within the community and sell our school? It's competitive right now. I just had a mom on the phone from St. Kate saying, "Hey, I want to give ISD 742 an opportunity to come back to middle school. I want to give them that chance at South Junior High School." And we'll take those opportunities, we'll give families the opportunity to come, or stakeholders, and share all the wonderful things. But as you know, we still have a perception out there of, hey, you don't want to send your kids there, and we'll just continue to challenge through conversations and get it out there through multiple vehicles of all the great things that are taking place. And Mr. Moes, you hit it. At the heart of it is student learning and how do we achieve through multiple opportunities for all kids.
Monica.
Hi, Jason.
Hey, Monica.
Thank you for everything. Como asi que tus estudiantes no hablan español, especialmente los de Inmersión. I noticed that you had a Spanish teacher talking there. I have a couple of questions. I'm very impressed with your numbers, so kudos for that, especially attendance. You have 95% attendance in the school. I did notice that you have in this school specifically 48% of black students compared to 44% of white students. And while students are doing at 50 and 60, over 50 and 60%, average in reading and math, 50 and 60 to 80, while black students are not. I also noticed in your video that you have very few, or I don't know if I saw any teacher of color in your school. So I have a question about this. And I also, I was looking at the, at the participation extracurricular activities, and I also see a lot, very low participation of students of color in a specific school that where you have a lot of students of color, especially black students, compared to whites. I mean, you have half and half. So I'd like to ask you, what are you doing to address this?
I'll start with the initial question that you talked about, where we see our white students achieving at a higher level than our students of color. I think, I just had a conversation with a teacher the other day. The same information comes to a student of color in the classroom, right? Our white students are, is sinking. Our students of color is not there yet. And we're working with our teachers on cultural responsive teaching. And that goes into what we talked about and you heard, really helping kids critically think and work in small groups. Helping kids see the end result. College is an option, career is an option, and really help all families, specifically families of color, understand that and giving them support systems to do that. You talked about the extracurricular activities. Some of the times where a student has to go home and watch their brother or sister pulls them away from activity. If we don't have an activity bus at the end of the day, a barrier might be transportation, where you're not getting all kids those opportunities. But we creatively try to find opportunities for kids to get involved in, in multiple things. As I stated, you saw the result with your five Somali female students that were top three in the state with Community Future Problem Solvers. Those students had an opportunity to get into extracurricular activity. You know it yourself, our leadership, our Latino students, they just were at a Augsburg College for a conference for students. We have to continue to create avenues and opportunities for kids to be exposed to those things. And I think it won't happen overnight. We just need to collaboratively work together, find what's working. I think we have a good formula around our effective schools model to give kids opportunity. And we'll start to see, specifically around proficiency, when you look at the growth data, our kids of color aren't far behind. They're, they're right there. Even our E L kids are growing at average or above-average rates in, in growth. M C A testing, I was just talking to a teacher the other day, how do we, how do we build strategies in? If we don't teach kids how to take tests, right? It's not in the curriculum. How do we give them opportunities or feel that they're going to do well if they don't have those chances? So we've been really trying to find creative ways to get kids on test-taking, key words, through vocabulary, reading comprehension, to look at those things. But I think our collaborative model and our learning design at our school, working in data teams, collaborative teaching, we found some strategies to help all kids. But I don't think we're going to see it in the next year or two proficiency-wise, but we'll continue to grow kids every year. So when you're a son or daughter, our goal is, here's the path, we want to grow them to a higher level, and we start from where we, where they come from. Staff of color, this is my fourth year. When I took over, I was the only one. We have one licensed special education teacher, and we probably now have 15 staff of color in various roles, from Hispanic to black to Somali to Asian, where we want to make up of our school to be represented amongst our, our staff. And we've been really conscious on trying to make that happen in multiple ways. Like you and I know, you see our younger culture not going to education. I think we found some ways through the colleges, St. John, St. Ben, St. Cloud, St. Cloud Technical, St. Cloud State, where we've really had our college students coming to South and working in the classrooms, so we can build that bridge to get more staff of color in our school and our community. Participation was the specifically, kind of what I stated before. We see multiple variables of why kids aren't involved. Like I said, if I got to go watch my brother and sister after, if my parents work two jobs, that might not be viable option. How do we create it where that can be at the beginning of the day or through the school day? One of the things that we talked about, and I think this is something the board might want to look at, we don't have a late activity bus for kids to go home. Most districts have a late activity bus. So saying, "Hey, kids that want to stay after school, you got a late activity bus, you can..." Transportation is not the barrier. I think we've been finding creative ways through the school district vans and really helping our staff. Like you took a group of students through the van, I think we've been finding creative ways to get all kids. Our motto is, every kid should be involved in something. And we know when kids are involved, that they become a part of the community, they become vested on, on achievement and learning.
So just a follow-up of that. So I'm taking notes. So some of the things that we do need to look as a board is about, and as a school, I guess, as a district, is about some possibilities of having core transportation and other expenses, daycare, for example, at the end of the day, to facilitate student participation. And also, and especially transportation, looking for extending the ability of students to participate in the afternoons to activities at school. So I'm taking note of that. Thank you. And I also wanted to say kudos to you and thank you for the STEAM, instead of the STAM emphasis.
Right, right.
For the people that don't know what STEAM is, is STAM with art.
Right, right.
So thank you very much. I think that you're the only principal that I've had here yet talking about STEAM versus STAM, and I just really wanted to congratulate you for that effort.
Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce.
I'd like to just, if I may please, just going back to this activity bus notion that we don't have that, and I'd like to just, rather than put the question to our principal, just Mr. Superintendent, is that a, is that a budgetary item that we just can't get that done, or what might be a soft, small answer here?
Yep. So Mr. Moes is throwing me a pitch, and so I'm supposed to hit it out of the park, and sometimes I strike out, so we'll go ahead and try to answer that one. I think one of the ways that we've been addressing or researching, and we know this, and you're listening to Principal Harris talk about that, but we have our ad hoc committee, our Activities Ad Hoc Committee run by Mr. Henshaw and Mr. Home. And so they've been bringing different recommendations or different things that they've had discussion about from that committee, presenting information to Cabinet, presenting information to Board Finance. And so as it relates to, there's some suggestions there. And just like with all different things, there's suggestions or there's recommendations, then as a district administration, we bring it to the board with what we can, cannot do, what we recommend, how it fits within our, within our budget. I can tell you point-blank, we would love to just, just have everything, to do everything, and just let's do it. There's, I don't think there's anybody in this room that would not like to have activity buses for all, that would like to not have every program possible for all of our kids to have that exposure, that exposure, that word exposure. Some way, so there will be something coming as it relates to activities or trying to get more kids to participate. It might not be all in the kit and caboodle in this year, but the goal is to somehow, some way figure out how to do this. He talked about vans, he talked about partnerships and volunteers and things of that nature. We've had conversation with Metro Bus, okay? Because our Metro Bus folks recognize the importance of our kids participating. And so we're exploring all these different avenues and, and, I'm not saying it's at the very beginning stages, but we're in that conversation, we are trying to figure it out.
I think Mr. Jett hit on a, on a piece with the Metro. They have now donated specifically tokens for kids to catch city bus. So that's, that has helped with kids towards that barrier piece with transportation.
During the school, sorry, during the school year, you mean?
Yes. So either to school or after school, they've donated bus tokens for students.
Bruce Henshaw.
Just some additional comments to what Superintendent Jett was saying, was saying. As part of our Student Activities Study, one area we studied was participation trends, and we looked particularly at gender, participation trends, diversity, and free and reduced lunch. And we found that we're fine really with gender in terms...
And we found that we're fine really with gender in terms of female and male participation in the activities program across the district. But in terms of race and diversity, more white students are participating than students of color by a significant amount. But when we look at free and reduced lunch, overwhelmingly, kids who are participating in our activities program are not on free and reduced lunch. And there's a wide gap there. And it points to what you're talking about in terms of the barriers that stand in front of kids who come from families that have economic challenges, from needing the kids to work, to babysit for the single mom who's got a job, to just finding a way home from practice, paying the activity fees and paying the associated costs to participate, and finding a way to be involved in an activities program as a third and fourth grader when many of our activities programs are starting on a competitive nature. Because they come from a challenging background, they can't afford the travel teams and things, and it puts them at a great disadvantage. And in a lot of ways, it dampens their participation at the junior, at the middle school level. Then add to that the fact that when the school board cut the middle school activities program in 2002, and it was eventually returned, it wasn't returned in most individual activities. It was returned in team sports. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of activities for which, if a seventh grader wants to participate, they have to find their way over to the high school. And that becomes an even greater challenge than for a student facing economic challenges. I would even say, Principal Harris, when you go back and look at your reading scores, for example, MCA reading scores, the big difference is between kids on free and reduced lunch and kids not on free and reduced lunch. Much greater than the difference between different racial groups. And I think as a district, and as a community, and even as a society, we have to figure out a way to address the disadvantage that some kids face as they are coming through our educational system. And how do we best provide support, encouragement, and opportunities for those kids? And I think you're doing a lot of those things right now in our, in our middle schools already, but I think it's important for us to get our head around that.
I think you hit on something that I didn't speak on, that barrier around social economics, right? Resources. And I think we stated, giving kids opportunity, believing that all kids can learn and achieve, and being creative, like you kind of talked about, and finding ways to get all kids engaged.
Jerry.
I just wonder if there's also possibly a social factor of who is perceived as being on the team? And whose friends ask other friends to be on the team? And, I don't know, I went to a small high school. Everybody had to be on the team, otherwise we didn't have a team. So lots of my teammates were, you know, didn't have a whole lot of advantages. But we were all, across the spectrum, fighting to get them on the team because we needed people, and they felt welcome. And I just wonder if that's another factor. Who's the captain of the team? Who's in and who's out? And maybe, and I don't know what you do about that, and maybe I'm off-base there, but it might be that my friends are not on the team, and so I'm not going to, I'm not going to overcome those barriers to get on the team.
The social element of friendships, that plays a part into it. I think Mr. Henshaw's hit it. When kids start sports at first and second grade competitively, and then in middle school where I'm just learning the basic skills of a sport, that might be discouraging sometimes. But I think our district does a good job of, specifically at the middle level, of giving kids opportunities to learn those basic skills. Because if they didn't have that opportunity, what else? And I think we'll just continue to work at getting kids engaged and participate, but we have the opportunity. Most school districts, you look at it, when you move closer to the metro, don't have middle school sports. They do it all through community. I think we do a good job of creating that opportunity to learn those skills. But it's a couple of things. I think social and then kids starting at a younger age competitively.
So a couple of things I just want to point out. I've walked the halls with Principal Harris, and I was young once, and when I watched him do what he does, so when he first started his presentation, he was mellow. And when I'm walking with him in the hallways, there's never a mellow bone in his body. He's flying around, he's high-fiving, he's in classrooms. And so I was shocked and surprised to see this mellowness, but then I looked at the clock and I understood. One of the things I want to express or make sure it's said out loud, Jason is the principal of a school that is growing, that people are wanting to attend. This school is ever-changing, it's ever-evolving. It has all these things that he mentioned, extensive programs and programming. And it's a model. And I heard Mr. Van Korf say, the world needs to hear more of that. And this man up here is humble, but he works extremely hard with parents, communities, community partners, the staff and the students, and you could see it in the pictures in the slide. But the biggest thing that you always hear him talk about is providing access and opportunity, but more importantly, at the junior or the middle school level or that level, is he always talks about exposure. He's always trying to make sure that his kids or his students have exposure to different things so that they can see the entire world and figure out where their niche is and what their interests are. The other thing, when I use the word model, I just had to say this. In the last, he said he's been here four years, and so his administrative team has changed each year. And in that, they always say, train the trainer, grow your own. But he has modeled it and done it so well that if you look between Lori Putnam and Mr. Richard Chakolos, so Lori's at Kennedy, Richard Chakolos was an administrative intern and now is an assistant principal at Tullahi. Shannon, Avinson is now at the district level for next year. There is something that he's doing right at South in terms of helping us to grow our own and just to help us to create that atmosphere and that community. So I just wanted to make sure I said that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jett.
Doesn't look like there's any other questions. Thank you, Jason, for the presentation. It was very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.